Enough that I don't want to do it. I don't have to.
Actually, fire detectors have radio.
Fire detectors?
Smoke detectors?
Smoke detectors, yeah.
Oh.
I guess I don't really know how they work. I know how infrared ones work, but...
I know how they work. I set one off all the time when I cook.
(laughing). Not already at your house. Let's go ahead and get started. So, actually, let's first welcome you. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're here and what you're doing in the Boy Scouts?
I started doing Communication Mayor Badge when I went to scout camp a week ago. And then I signed up for Communication Mayor Badge and then I had to be in a meeting.
A public meeting? Okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, tell them a little bit more about yourself. Where you're from.
I'm from Clinton County in Beach Creek, Pennsylvania. And I came up here because, well, my grandfather always takes me up to Campbell instead every summer.
Very good.
So, do you make your way up to Warren often? I mean, how often are you up here?
Um, not that often.
Yeah.
Not often enough, huh?
I have it for two weeks now.
Well, that's a good... Well, I mean, Clinton, how far of a drive is that? It's probably three, four hours.
Two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours.
What's Clinton?
It's just north of State College.
North of Center County.
It's sandwiched between Center County and Micahlin County. And Beach Creek is just a tiny little town.
Yeah, middle of nowhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thanks for coming.
What grade did you just finish in school?
I just finished ninth grade and I'm going into tenth grade.
You're gonna do the Eagle Scout program?
Uh, once I get there.
Right. You can start that junior year, right? Finish it by the end of senior?
Yeah, as long as they have until they're eighteen years old to complete their Eagle requirements, so...
You have any ideas on what you want to do?
I don't know yet.
Well, grandfather's got a lot of ideas, I'm sure. How many projects have you overseen?
Oh, my gosh. At least ten.
Pretty time intensive.
Yeah.
Now, today's meeting helps you get your communication badge?
Well, hopefully we learn something about how to not communicate.
I registered him with troop thirteen so he could go to camp with me. That's the troop I work with in North Warren.
So, does that mean you have a dual membership or...?
Uh, kinda.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, this one is temporary, so right now, yeah, dual.
Okay. Understood.
We had a lot of pleasant weather last week, didn't we?
A lot of yard work?
Did you learn to swim? Play in the mud?
Yeah. Oh, you were at camp last week?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this week you're...
That's why you couldn't find me last week. I was intentionally hiding from you guys.
I think you did tell them about it.
I spent a week of camp there, yeah.
Well, how'd you find dry wood for your fires?
Uh, we put them under... Put them under a tarp.
Good move.
Yeah, it was cold and rainy the first half of the week. The only day we had that we had any sunshine was Wednesday. And that was cooking in the campsite night, so it worked out perfect.
I remember last week being okay. Maybe it...
We had rain.
I don't recall where.
It was Monday, Wednesday.
I know the western side of the county got hit this weekend, but continually with rain. And from what I hear over here, it was actually really nice.
It was beautiful.
It was.
Turned out very... Yesterday was a gorgeous day. Comfortable though outside.
I imagine while you've got free labor, you're gonna be doing a lot.
All right.
Get those trees to get kind of...
This is my muscle man.
All right, well, thanks for coming. Jeff, did you want to update us on your marketing task force?
Um, no, but I will. No, I figured that I have some edits to make to the resolution, but basically, this past week, we met with everybody except one member or potential member of the group to... You know, this is something that we've been talking about for months and months and months, is putting together a group that would review all of the past, you know, studies that have been done, all of the various recommendations that have been done. You know, there's been so much work over the past fifteen years on how to promote tourism, promote business, you know, recruit, you know, technical employees to the county, you know, clean up the town, you know, clean up the area, do, you know, all those kinds of things to try to make it more attractive for investment, for business opportunities. So, over the past six months, I've been talking to a lot of different people to try to find people that I thought would be really great, people that are changemakers in the community, that are heavily involved in various marketing initiatives and business initiatives within the county. And I wanted a group that would be, wouldn't kind of be tied up in, you know, past practice, you know, tradition, people that would be able to look at everything very objectively. And so, I finally got all the people together as a group that I think would be, would be able to serve under those, under that kind of a perspective. And we met for about an hour and a half last Wednesday, just to, so that I could share with them what I've put together to this point and then to kind of get their input on what they think of it and how they'd like to move forward. And had a very good discussion as a result of it. Up until this point, it's all, everything's been of a conversational nature. So, this is the first time where we kind of, you know, had a conversation that was a bit deeper. So, I've put together a resolution that I'm not ready to, I think what'll end up happening is we'll talk about it in next week's work session. I'll bring it to that meeting, like a final draft for the commissioners to review. The resolution essentially creates the framework for the marketing task force. The idea's gonna be for it to function over a six-month period, reviewing all of the previous, you know, studies that have been done, the various groups that have been involved, review that information. And then also bring their own perspectives of, you know, projects, ideas, things that can be done to change or better the community, whether it could be, you know, website, internet marketing, print marketing. You know, there's a physical element to it, you know, what are our traffic patterns like? What is our signage situation like in the county? What can we do to, you know, potentially channel people in order to get more, you know, to get, have them have a better experience and have a better opportunity for us to make money? Just all of those kinds of things, basically bringing every, reviewing everything, taking everything that they have, bring it to the table and producing a report that will essentially be a list of recommendations to the commissioner's office and to the county for improvements that will, you know, make an immediate impact. Most of the studies that have been done over the past few years have had, you know, recommendations in them or they've had findings, but none of, there was never any attempt from those things to produce tangible, real recommendations that involve, you know, the specific players in how to get things done, you know? So, this is, the goal is gonna be to have a report that is doable, actionable. And then, you know, basically, you know, I've talked with Dan about this and others about utilizing it for, it can be referenced in our overall strategic plan that we're gonna be working on. But really, it's, for me, it's a document that should be utilized, you know, through the COG and through other organizations to coordinate with municipalities, coordinate with various nonprofits and non-governmental organizations, community entities, in order to move in a direction to, you know, have an immediate impact, to, you know, improving tourism, improving visitor experience, improving business development and recruitment. And so, the group is very excited about it. I think that, the way I look at it, like I said, is like next week, I'll bring a resolution and like a white paper document and maybe, or also like a press release and some other information. And then also have the list of people that I want on, or I would like to ask to be on the group. And then we'll have a discussion about it. If everybody's comfortable with it, then we'll put the resolution on the agenda and then pass the resolution. And then the commissioners, as a part of the resolution, it's a legal document, so they'll have, at the same time, we'll end up appointing the people to the group. Most of what, most of what was discussed Wednesday night was just trying to get everybody's schedules lined up and what they felt like a good timeframe was to get the report done and have it be complete and comprehensive, so... They were not impressed with my eagerness to, the timeframe I originally had was a little bit aggressive. And they wanted to get half a little bit more time in order for them to be able to review all of the various pieces of information and...
How many are in this group?
It's gonna be seven total, including a commissioner. So, there's six basic community members. Right now, the tentative list is Jim Decker from WCCBI, Dave Sherman from the Visitors Bureau, Sherry Toon from the Allagany, or the National Forest, Chuck Gray from the Library Theater, and Piper Van Orde from Allagany Outfitters. And so, and they, they all seem to have a very good rapport and they're proactive, you know?
So, they go next year to the theater and...
Yeah.
Was...
Oh, sorry, Lisa Hagberg from Youngsville Borough. So, I wanted to have people from local municipal government, have people from nonprofits, have people from the private sector, the business community, and then have people that are kind of involved in, you know, Chamber of Commerce and tourism, so...
It's a good group.
Sounds like it.
This may sound minor, but I really liked how you formatted all of this. I mean, it really looks like a resolution, like you passed on the state, what you're thinking.
Yeah, I did, I spent quite a bit of time like trying to research how other counties, not necessarily even in Pennsylvania, have done this in various ways. And one of, one of the things that I used as reference was in Florida, there was a county that wanted to have a task force on millennials, which I should share that with you so that you can...
Is that a lean?
Well, they wanted to, they wanted to...
How to deal with these freaks of nature.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, to some extent, that was it, was like, how do we deal with millennials? And they, so they put this task force together. They had like thirty people on it. It was crazy. Now, they're a county, the county was pretty massive or whatever, but they, they had this, you know, extensive document that they put together, you know, with all this stuff. And so, I do, I use different ones like that as reference and try to put something together that I thought would, you know, cover all the bases. And at the same time, I want the group to have some teeth. So, the, you know, part of the resolution is also that the group is going to be interacting with various parts of the government in order to gather information. And I want them to be able to go to those governments with an efficient title under the commissioner's office, saying, "I'm a part of the marketing task force. I've been requested to, you know, gather this information on behalf of the commissioner's office." You know, not, not have it be kind of a, you know, give them some ownership over the whole process, so... That's why it is the way it is. The, between now and next week, the goal's gonna be to have, like I said, like a white paper that distills down stuff that's discussed in the ordinance or in the resolution, so that anybody can sit and kind of look at it and understand it and make sure of it.
Jeff, with so much going on within the city of Warren itself, are you gonna include maybe some of the city government, either staff or council?
That was one of the questions that came up during the meeting. And I feel like we have a good enough relationship generally with the city that, and everybody that's there, most of them have a very direct connection to the city. So, I think that it won't be hard to include them as far as gathering information, stuff like that. I think that at the time, I looked at it and I really wanted to cap the group at seven people. And so, I considered bringing people in from the city, but I didn't want it to appear as if it was just about the city, you know? Because I think that with the county...
Once you start adding geography, it gets complicated too. I mean, sure, the city's by far the biggest entity, but I think by getting Lisa to cover government outside of things...
She'll represent all of it, not just...
Yeah, you've got the private industry representing all private industry. Because once you start dividing up this county by geography, you start getting tropors for it.
And I think that the city has a lot of initiatives that are good in their own right. And so, I think the part of this is to look, not just look at, look at the city as a piece, but to look at everything outside, because I think that there, I think there's a lot we can do outside of the city in order to improve the, you know, you know, people's experience coming into the county, you know, traveling around the county, finding, you know? Because I don't, there are a lot of great events in the city to focus on, but there's a lot of stuff going on in Sheffield, Youngsville, Freehold, everywhere. And I want to try to make, you know, use this as an opportunity to draw like events as well.
Do you know if Commissioner Morrison's coming?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, good. So, that covers the first two. By the way, this reminds me, they're coming about Memorial thing. I just got asked to be part of a board or something within the County Commissioners Association and present at the summer conference.
Oh, very good.
On, well, they called it, what did they call it? Young County Leadership or something like that.
There you go. Well, who do we got to meet young?
Yep.
It's like a capitalizing shirt, but why don't we throw them on?
Uh, it's probably about the extent of it, yeah.
No, that's great.
Remember when we were down at the CCAP conference on HR stuff?
Oh, yeah.
We, we were the youngest people there, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
And there's a twelve-year gap between the two of us.
Yeah.
So, I was definitely the youngest person in that room.
But everybody thinks I'm way younger than I actually am, which I think is funny. I mean, to them, I can understand it, because I'm, you know, fifteen or twenty years younger than they are, but...
Well, anyway, so there's this, this old guy that's sitting between us, you know? And, and he started saying something about those millennials, they never take personal responsibility for anything. And we, we listened to this for probably a half hour of ranting. Though I finally, when I heard that one, I finally said, "Do you have any kids?" And he said, "Yeah, I've got a, whatever, a twenty-eight-year-old and twenty-four-year-old." I said, "At what point are you gonna take personal responsibility for raising them where you did?"
Yeah, we were very popular by the end of the show. So, I, I, yeah, we, I watched it, it was a diatribe about how, you know, some of the best people we got are millennials. Like, what are you complaining about? And they were just like, "Well, hold on, slow down." Like, but, yeah.
Yeah, that was fun. All right, so, resolution to step up? The step-up resolutions are yours?
Yeah, again, that's, that's something that I think that I'll present officially next week, because I'm still talking with the solicitor as well as the judges about it and some other people. But, so I think that I'll, I think that we'll have like a rollout of that next week and all. And it'd be good for Commissioner Morrison to be here to discuss that as well.
Okay. Good. So, this is the first meeting of the quarter. Did you have any, well, you might want to comment on that too, until Commissioner Morrison's here as well.
Yeah.
But I guess next time, next week, let's set aside some time to talk about quarterly objectives.
Well, so, one thing that I wanted to, well, I'm not really prepared to talk about this either, but I want to talk about it anyway, because I'm so excited about it. And it's not a big deal, but I'm just, it's a big deal to me. Anyway, Hunter Smith's finally sent me new pictures for, that he showed me for the benches on the...
Oh.
And not a big deal, but a deal to me.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a big deal, because I think that the solution that he's come up with is really great. And, you know, especially for, he's, he's figured out a way to save us money in putting these benches in. And the solution that he's come up with, I think, is really fabulous. So...
These are the concrete benches you were talking about?
Yeah, I wanted to, what I'd like to do is, is take it, I'll send these pictures to Josh too, but to send them to you guys with, and I can't remember the name of the company that he's, that he's, that he's working with.
Whitmire Block.
Whitmire Block. He's, he's got a, he's working with them right now on pricing for the whole thing. And it looks like it's gonna be under like the kind of budgeted amount that we had discussed with them. But he went out and I kind of had said to them, said to Hunter that I really didn't care, that he could get as creative with it as possible. I just really wanted the benches to be nice, like that was like my bottom line. And he's like, "Well, what does that mean?" And I said, "I don't know." I said, "I'll know when I see it or whatever." And so, and the other concern was that we wanted to make sure that Luke put something in place that wouldn't be vandalized, that, you know, minimize that as much as possible. So, he had gone around, but anyway, found this, these benches by Whitmire Block where they have kind of basically a mold that represents, that kind of duplicates the look of distressed wood or, and everything. And...
Oh, so that's not wood?
No, it isn't. This is all concrete, all of it.
Oh, jeez.
And so, and then it sits on a concrete pad. So, they put these all together in mold and then basically what's gonna end up happening is we'll end up running along the path and putting the benches in place along the way. So, if anybody really wanted to steal one of these, you'd need, it would be, like, no one person could pick it up. Like, you'd have to have a crew. And then all we're, I think the goal is gonna be to anchor it into the dirt and everything. But even then, it's like, yeah, like you're gonna need a heck of a lot of effort to get the thing out of there. So, he's gonna get a price to me within the next week or whatever for, and I basically told him to really do, you know, a good evaluation of how many legitimately along the stretch, you know, to get, to make sure that people have enough, you know, that their, the need is being met. One of the concerns that we had is, we had talked about putting the benches up on the state hospital grounds facing the soccer fields, so that people could like sit in them and like watch the soccer practice. I think we have, that's one question that we have though.
Yeah, I want to get him linked up with the director of the hospital up there, make sure they're okay with it, because they have all that mowing and stuff to do. But we might have problems with benches all over the place that causes mowing problems.
And that'll, I think that'll make a difference as far as like what the number ends up being, you know, of benches, but... And I told him too to put his name on it, you know, on the benches.
And then Whitmire Block, I think, is gonna have like their logo stamped into the base or something like that, which, you know, is pretty standard, I think. I think that's a fun project. The other piece of this project is half-mile markers too, for people who like to walk and track out, track their mileage and turn the distance.
Yeah. That'd be good. You know, for my part, when I go running on that track, I lose track quick. As I'm gasping and wheezing.
Man, since you're here, I was gonna ask you, there was a crew last year that would ride next to the trail and cut the brush.
Mm-hmm.
Who, like...
The Retired Teachers Association does the first mile on up through to about, somewhere along that second mile portion. I'm not exactly sure where they stop, but some of the property under, when they're cutting the grass, they'll come, you know, over and cut. And the state hospital cuts the balance of it. I'm not sure how far south the state hospital cutting crew goes.
Well, I guess, well, I talked to Pat Cromiller and, and so, he's the one that you're talking about. Well, he's mowing it. He said that last year, there was a crew that would actually cut the bushes back.
Oh, that would be the township. They have a tractor with a boom mower on it. And whenever we need to have it done, we just contact Cromiller Township and they'll come up there with a boom mower and handle that. So, is he thinking that he's done that?
Yeah, he was saying that definitely.
Okay, I'll, I'll contact the township.
I've had it a couple times. Okay. Might even want to send up a work crew, an inmates with like locers.
Well, that's what I was wondering was if, I wasn't sure who would handle it previously.
Yeah, one year we did it and there were blackberry bushes down through there and somebody called screaming, saying, "The blackberries are almost ready for picking." And then somebody went through with a boom mower, cut them all down. But we don't like to have the bushes hit us in the face either when we walk out the trail. Can't believe it.
Can't win.
No.
Some person came complaining to me about how there's a decrepit bridge in Spring Creek Township that has to be replaced. And then a few weeks, well, maybe a few months later, it was slated to be removed. And they called the courthouse here and complained to me that they had to drive on a dirt road in order to get around the bridge. Just can't win.
Don't be ashamed of the road.
All right. For my projects, the fones are, I guess, a couple weeks behind schedule. We were hoping to have it done by the end of this quarter, or rather, by the end of the second quarter. But this radio, it's gonna take another couple weeks. I don't think we even have a phones, but just seeing massive savings, so...
Yeah, that's a good project.
Took it and made crew up to the warehouse for backstory. Erie Career Link was getting rid of, I don't know, thirty-some desks and some decent furniture, some junk furniture. And Erie County was paying to warehouse it. And I said, "I'll warehouse it for free if I can keep it." And they agreed, so I just paid shipping in order to have it moved down here to Warren. So, it's in our warehouse, but it was in a big mess. So, I grabbed a work crew the other day and we went up there and organized it, assembled some stuff. There's some junk, there's some really good stuff though, so it was definitely worth it. Pam, you saw, I mean?
Yes.
Definitely worth it. So, anyway, at this point, we need to send, first of all, an email out, because I know a lot of, what I told people was, you can start taking furniture, but you have to send a picture of it or the barcode to me. Well, I'm seeing the furniture from this all over the place in our county buildings, and I have yet to get a single email. So, people need to report what they took. I don't care what they took, I just, I mean, that they took it, I just want to know what it is, so that we mark it off of the master list. So, we need to send that email out. Probably the best if it came from you. I'd like to see it before it comes out.
Okay.
And then if any other offices, may as well include in that, if any offices know, like Dan needs a couple things, we can start allowing them to take it. And then once the county has collected what they want, we figure I'll let the paper know and we can invite nonprofits in the county to come and get their pickings if they want. So, the rural community college isn't gonna use as much as what they originally planned on. The main reason that I got this stuff is because I thought the college would want it. And they took what they wanted and there's still a lot left, so...
What's down there?
Uh, there's probably ten really nice tables, probably thirty disassembled desks.
The student unit needs some desks and tables and such.
Okay.
Something really nice high five, big ladder.
Okay. Yeah, so, who's the part I'm talking to?
Uh, I'm the board, so...
Perfect. Fantastic. Good, so we'll just plan time to go down and look at some of that.
Yeah, there's tables down there and then there's actual, kind of like a student desk that is on, you know, like an L-shaped and then the square top.
We've had a lot of old stuff. That's just...
I know they had a lot of old stuff that's just falling apart and just kind of disgusting. So, if you notice upgrade it, just call us.
And with this stuff, even if it's not quality, I mean, it's decent, but at least it'll be uniform?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be, that'd be close.
Yeah, so let's take a little trip down to the warehouse. So, next week, we'll do the first quarter discussion on what projects we want to tackle over this quarter. Schedule. For my part, I know there's an Eggs and Issues, it's coming up, I think, the fourteenth, I believe so. I will not be at the Eggs and Issues. That's gonna be Representative Raffensperg and Senator Hutchinson giving an update on the budget and its impact. But I won't be there because the day before, I'm going to the White House. We all got invitations from the White House to go to some legislative, intergovernmental legislative affairs thing.
What day is that?
The thirteenth. So, I was already gonna be down in Harrisburg on the fourteenth, so I figured, sure, I'll go to the White House on the thirteenth. Just another couple hours. And then, the week after that is NACO. So, I'm gonna be going to the National Associations of County Commissioners Conference because it's in Columbus, Ohio this year. Figures, at least during this term, it's not gonna get any closer than that. Then I pay the way and everything so that it's not, the county's not paying for it. Mostly because we don't have enough budget.
Yeah, we don't have NACO money either.
So, that's the following week. So, point being, the middle week or so of July, I will mostly not be around at all. But we'll be doing kind of good ones. Just be down at CCAT, be down at NACO.
So, is the meeting on the thirteenth or is it the fourteenth?
The thirteenth. The White House tours at like nine and then at noon until six P.M. is meeting with the White House staff. And then after that, there's a meeting at NACO from like six thirty P.M. to whenever.
Yeah, I keep trying to decide whether I want to go to there or not.
Well, one of those days, I need at least one commissioner here because we're gonna start meeting negotiations and I believe that's on the thirteenth.
Well, no, well, I don't.
It's not on the calendar yet. Mark just confirmed it.
Oh, super. So, are we gonna? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I want to go down just to.
Would you like to go to Trump White House or negotiate with the union?
Well, and the other, and we need to have our list of what we want to present also ready by then.
Yeah, well, I've got a list.
Well, yeah, it's pretty important.
I think my list will actually probably surprise the union because there's a lot of things that I want that, of course, anyone in management's gonna want. There's a lot of areas that I'm willing to give in. So, hopefully, hopefully, we all come to a compromise quickly. Of course, I don't know what the other commissioners are thinking, so.
Doesn't get any stuff gibberdied.
Part of my strategy.
Oh, okay. I'll convey your concerns while you're down talking with the administration.
Do you have any scheduling updates? Should we just move on to other stuff?
No, the, the, one other thing that I wanted to talk about was, I should have put this on the agenda. I mentioned it, I had mentioned it to you before, was the quote for the boiler, for the, for the air handlers over in the jail. So, Rusty had gotten, had got a estimate from Johnson Controls at one point to basically replace the, what was it, the cooling coil and equipment related to the cooling setup in the jail. So, it was the condensing unit and the cooling coil, basically. And so, that estimate was at twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Now, the engineering firm has reviewed the schematics of the building, done a thorough evaluation of the heating and cooling setup. And they basically come to the determination that the air handler for the jail is twice the size that it should be. Nobody really knows why that is. There's a, there's a, you know, there's an assumption that at some point they built it that way in the idea that eventually if the jail expanded, that the air handler could handle the situation. But basically, what's happening is, is it's running and shutting down constantly, which is causing stress on the system. And it's also producing a huge amount of humidity in the building. So, and then also, it's using, like, you know, probably double the amount of energy it needs in order to run. So, they're recommending that we replace the air handler along with the other equipment that's associated with it in order to have a system that runs on less energy and is also more efficient for the building overall. And might also, it should fix a lot of the heating and cooling issues of the building generally, aside from what we're, the problems that we're having now. To replace the air handler, they're estimating that the overall cost of the project is gonna go up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred. So, which is obviously an additional, like, ten thousand dollars for the project. I personally think that it's something that needs done because it's the cooling, this cooling unit that they were gonna replace really was gonna fix an issue that was seen to a large degree down on the first floor. But I think that, you know, making sure that the building itself has an efficient heating and cooling setup and that the rest of the building is as temperature controlled as possible.
No, I agree. And it's gonna be, if you did fix it the way it is, it's just getting down, keeping the can down the road. The other thing is, we have more money in the capital budget than we anticipated because the boiler's not gonna cost as much as we budgeted for. So, I think moving ten thousand from that bucket to this is fine.
Okay.
We should be able to cover it.
Okay, then I'll talk to them and get them started on the bid documents so that they can do the process for us.
Okay. And what's the boiler update?
The boilers are the same, but they're, they're putting the bid documents together now. Their estimates the same as what they gave us previously. This, they had to do with the, with the jail, they had to do more research in order to do the estimate of what the heating and the cooling numbers were on the facility itself. The, the, the boiler's gonna be the same.
Okay?
Which was, I think it was forty-seven thousand. How did it work out? That was seventy thousand. Sorry, I'm thinking about the article newspaper.
Yeah.
Put the money symbol in. But, yeah, yeah, that'll end up being seventy.
Okay. While we're on that general topic, I think the domestic relations or the Hickory Street House building at this point, it's very interesting. They've got their own system, new roof, the rod and parts of the windows replaced around the building. So, now, the last thing on my list before we can close that down and consider it ungood for at least the end of our term would be replacing the windows on the front. Originally, I know you weren't so excited about it, just because it's not necessary, but AOPC is a grant that we can, we can get for it. So, these county owners will.
Yeah, well, that always gets interesting. Well, that was the thing that I said when, when you brought it up again was that, you know, if you guys have AOPC money for it, then, you know, go, then we should move on. I think my question, like, was, is that Matt has to figure out whether we need a permit of some type in order to do it, like, I guess, because there was a concern, oh, there's gonna be a need for an architect. Didn't he?
Well, what he was saying was that the city, having before, are not get, like, he wasn't so sure that he needed an architectural drawing per se.
Yeah.
Because the city would probably just accept, like, something from another back one avenue kind of thing.
Okay.
Because it's not over there and everything, just probably in the wood and stuff.
Yeah, if we can get the real life there, then, you know, I think that it should be done.
Okay, and it'll be under ten thousand, so if he just calls around and hits a few, we don't have to really put out the bid to bid. Just calls, gets a few quotes, but I think it's gonna be in the seventy thousand range probably.
Seventy thousand?
Seven to eight thousand. By the way, my family's getting.
Now, you're going to the Trump administration.
All right, last thing I was gonna mention, I am putting together a letter to the Senate and the governor's office regarding the emergency radio system. As you may recall, I got called down to Harrisburg to testify a couple weeks ago on interoperability of our emergency systems and had a really productive conversation. The senators were surprisingly knowledgeable about the situation. At this point, we've begun to do some tests and try to figure out what sort of costs we might see if we were going to join the state on a pilot program for interoperable radio systems. And so, I think I'm about ready to re-approach the Senate with some numbers. So, at some point, probably next week, I'll get you all the letter, which is available to Pam in order to sign off on. I'm sure it's going to be well. Hey, I'm not sure I ever sent a press release over to you about, did you guys hear that Todd Lake and I went down to Harrisburg to testify?
They caused this, about it was not in depth.
I'll have to pull that up. I mean, it's actually kind of cool. I don't know how often commissioners get pulled down to Harrisburg to testify.
On boards?
Yes.
He burned it up often.
He has so much to look forward to.
Yeah, because then you can say, well, I did testify.
Yes, I did. Yep. You know Grover and Arbus, right?
I do.
Yeah, so, and he goes around, he goes around shaking hands like, hey, Grover and Arbus, blow our taxes, right? I'll walk around and, like, have my testified on the side. Be like a defining thing.
And nobody will think that you're a jerk at all.
No. So, for your communication lesson, sarcasm, very important. Or should I say, it's not important at all?
Yeah.
All right, that's it for me.
Chris, I do have one thing to add if I may. We just received a word from the D E P that our household hazardous waste electronized collection event scheduled for July twenty-second, Youngsboro High School, has been approved by the department. I do have a revised pricing here. We're submitting for a grant through the D E P to cover some, some of the costs of the recycling that we're able to reduce. The household hazardous waste, charge of a dollar thirty-five a pound to sixty-eight cents a pound and universal waste from one, a dollar thirty-two a pound to sixty-two cents a pound. Unfortunately, I can't get a press break on televisions and CRTs, but at least it helps on some of the, some of the wastes in this row here. Everything that applies to the discount, so, the discount applies to it. I've given Josh a copy of this. We want to start promoting the event. We should get something on the, on the county website. I've been receiving numerous calls, I think Pam can have as well, to people asking to, how they can register. On the flyer here is the web address for ECS and R to schedule a flight with, so. July twenty-second is right around the corner and we want to heavily promote this. This will be our second of the three that we have scheduled. The third one will be in October at the school district central office, which is the former Russell Elementary School.
Okay. Definitely use Julie as a resource.
Yeah, she's not in today. I did email Commissioner Edelson this morning with a copy of this. I've not familiarized myself with doing updates in a website yet, so if you have Julie or.
Then we'll set it up and promote it on Facebook.
Yeah, and if the newspaper would be willing to some sort of a promotion, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else we could do?
The other thing I want to let you know is that I met with Mary, who shared last week about, and her I T department, about redeveloping the human services website and incorporating it into our network. And I'm very excited about it. Julie has scraped all the content off of it. So, they're gonna be, so I don't think it's gonna take too long to get a demo of it. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about was doing a similar thing to what you did with the county and going out and scheduling a date, either you or somebody, and having it with pictures taken of all the directors over there.
Yeah.
And then also, maybe doing, you know, walking around and taking some pictures of the grounds and some other things to use as front of the building. Yeah, the window dressing.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely do that.
Because I have some stock photography resources I can use, like, as far as the services go, the building, some of the other stuff like that.
Yeah, can, can you just put a, early morning would be best, like, if they start at eight, eight o'clock? That's probably what the light would be best. I prefer to go outside shots if I can.
Well, that's what I figured, is that they could go, I mean, that can assist some days.
Yeah. Yeah, so just put it in my calendar sometime, you know, as early in the morning as possible. Or we could wait till, when we, till closer to when you're done with them.
No, I, the sooner the better because then I can use this up to my design. I mean, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
It's either that or maybe have their reply phone.
So, are all employees or the direct, the supervisors?
There's basically like eight pictures that need to be taken, you know, Mary, you know, head of D H, or head of children, youth, you know, I D, earlier bench and all those, I mean, what's on the site now? The people, they have pictures and basically somebody walked up to them while they're working at their desk. She's like, took the drone. And I'm like, we need professional shots.
I'll get with Mary and find out what would be a good day.
Yeah.
Okay.
And schedule that with her.
As long as it's not raining.
Yeah, then we'll just have to keep an eye on the weather.
Yeah, even overcast is okay. Yeah, we have to do that. I'll try to come through like in the evening with a, around a golden hour, or two shots of the outside.
Yeah, the other thing is, did we, did you, where are the shots, the headshots that were done? Are they in that folder? Because we should really get those up.
I think they're on my back. Yeah, we should get Julie to do that.
Well, we should do that. I mean, I was just saying, like, yeah, we get to, everybody gussing up for that.
Yeah. All right. So, we're gonna tell Julie to do that. She's gonna help us with your cycling.
See, she's a good fit for the planning department.
She really is.
Send everything to Julie.
I mean, very personal, actually. I just seem like, I like you.
She doesn't make it on you when it happens. And we told her she could do, you could, I think I said in the words, you can do whatever you want here, you know, as long as you want. The only caveat is you will never be rich. I said, this will be great for you. Everybody will talk about how great you're doing and what. I said, no, and then you can probably go get a job with anything for five hundred, but I mean.
Okay, anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Very good. Getting adjourned.